All right, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Emily Truman and I service the 2025 Chair of the Gates County Board of Commissioners. I am joined tonight by Commissioner Nathan Berryman, Commissioner Dave Forsyth, Assistant County Manager Warren Perry. We have absent Vice Chair Jonathan Craddock, Commissioner Brian Roundtree, County Manager Scott Sauer, and County Attorney Pitt Godwin for excused absences. We have one new introduction that we would like to make right here at the beginning. I'm going to ask Mr. Perry.
Yes, Gloria Renee Draper. She's our new clerk to the Board of the County Commissioners. She's a native of Gates County. She's a graduate of Pitt Community College where she majored in applied science. She's worked previously at Journey Ginnall with the Finance Department of Hurford County. She was the town clerk slash finance officer for the town of Orlando. And Ms. Draper and her family have recently moved from Ahoski to U.R. And we welcome Ms. Draper to our team and Gates County Government.
Good evening, thank you for this opportunity. I'm very excited to be here and happy to be home. Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome.
We are very happy to have you too. All right, so tonight we're going to continue the regular meeting from December 2nd. We need a motion to reconvene.
So moved, so seconded.
All right, moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We are going down here. All right, we are going to begin with the prayer and pledge with Commissioner Berryman.
I'll just pray. Dear heavenly Father, thank you for the goodness and the mercy we receive every day. As we begin this meeting, I pray that you give us the courage and wisdom to navigate the path that you have prepared. Help us not rely on our knowledge but your guidance. Let us remain united according to your will and fulfill the purpose you have ordained for us. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so moving into the approval of the agenda, a few things this evening, amendments that need to be made. We're going to try something new and we have asked the county manager to include a public comment period at both the beginning and the end of the meeting. The public comment at the beginning of the meeting will remain the five-minute period. At the end of the meeting, there will be a three-minute period with a 20-minute cap total put at the end. This is an experimental thing of sorts and pending how it goes, will be voted on in January to adopt that as a part of our procedure. Additionally, there are a few changes to the agenda due to the absence of staff and commissioners this evening. Ms. Draper has amended the original agenda for your reference and has provided a new agenda. If approved, and you should have both documents in front of you, we need a motion to remove items six, eight, and 10 from the agenda and to add two new items, including an update from Sheriff Campbell and Commissioner's comments. So for six, eight, and 10, and the addition of the two.
So moved.
So seconded.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, so moving along, we are going to go into the public comment period. Ms. Draper, do we have any?
Ann Howell. Okay. Good evening, I'm Ann Howell, 29 White Oak Road, U.R., North Carolina. And I have two comments, but I'm seeing from the agenda that they're not really necessary, but I'm going to tell you what I was going to tell you to begin with. The first thing, at the last meeting, we noticed that we were having difficulty in hearing. I know that you're speaking to one another, but it was not really carrying out, and I understand that you have rearranged some of the microphones. Also, when you are listening at home, it's difficult at times. So please be aware of that, and thank you for taking care of that. The second thing is something that I mentioned some years ago, and it didn't get any response. But I see on number 11, the second public comment. You have added that to try it, and I thank you for that because sitting here listening to things that go on during the meeting after the first public comment, you might want to have something to comment on, but by the time you get home and you get to the next meeting in the next month, you've forgotten all about what you wanted to talk about. So I thank you for that. So both of my comments have done good, and thank you for both of them.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Are there any other public comments?
No.
Okay. All right, thank you. So we are going to move right along here and ask the sheriff, Ray Campbell, if he could come up and give us an update on a situation here in the county. Oh.
Play the video first.
We can't. So there's going to be a short video that's going to play, and then he's going to follow up with commentary on that video.
Also tonight, an alleged scanner presses her luck and ends up in jail instead of far away with a lot of money. Kelly Early is accused of trying to take money from her victim twice in Gates County. The first time, authorities say that they were waiting for her. Turn of your side's Madison Peirman walks us through this case.
Usually when you fall victim to a scam, it's all online, but the Gates County Sheriff's Office says one criminal was so brazen, they not once, but twice shut up to an elderly woman's front door asking for thousands of dollars.
The scamming situation has gotten completely off the chain, not only here, but I think it's a nationwide emergency.
Sheriff Ray Campbell with the Gates County Sheriff's Office says even he gets scam calls, but he says what unfolded Friday was on another level. He says this started after a woman in her 80s got an email explaining her PayPal was having issues. The scam intending sender claimed he'd sent her too much money and she needed to return it.
They were very demanding, very demanding over the phone about what to do, what time, where have you been, why haven't you called me back?
After 17 calls, the woman reportedly went to the bank and withdrew around $20,000. Then a woman, later identified as Kelly Early, picked up the cash from the woman's home, but the scammers weren't done with her.
The scammers continued to put pressure on her to withdraw more funds.
The Gates County woman returned to the bank, but this time bankers were suspicious. They told her to report it as a potential scam.
We got involved and pretty much set a trap.
The operation required investigators to hide in around the house to catch the scammer who, on Friday, drove right into the trap in a 2025 black BMW sedan.
So they were arrested, had the residence, and subsequently placed on a $1 million cash bond.
Deputies now have Kelly Early, who's originally from Jacksonville, Florida, in custody, but they don't think she was working alone.
These are professional scammers. These are not your backyard criminals. They're running criminal enterprises.
Whether you're a scammer working alone or not, Sheriff Campbell has one thing to say to you.
Don't come to Gates County because we will want you down.
Now again, Sheriff Campbell wants to reiterate, if you fall victim to a scam like this or a scam of any kind, do not be embarrassed, report it immediately. For now, that's the latest here in Gates County. I'm Madison Peirman, turn of your side.
And we have more on the scams to watch out for, especially around the holidays posted now on Wavvy.com.
All right, Sheriff Campbell has an update for us on that, some more information.
Good evening, folks. Ms. Early joined us for court Monday for her, like her first appearance or whatever. And there was another charge levied against her, and that was to do, but I can't remember the exact wording of it, but it was due to elderly, taking advantage of the elderly. So for financial gain. So anyway, Judge Amber Davis hit her with another $500,000 secured bond, so she's looking at a million and a half, but she will not get out. That situation, I wish I could tell you everything. I'm really, really excited about how this investigation is going. It took a monumental leap today, and so we're looking forward to that. So anyway, that's what happens when you got good people, you got good people on your team, and to keep good people, you got to pay them. So you know, that's a discussion for another night, but that's the bottom line. I've got a great bunch, I want to keep them, and this is the kind of things you can do when you've got good folks. So anyway, thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Okay, so we're moving on to item number five, approval of the Schedule of Values for the 2025 Octennial Reassessment of Real Property. Unfortunately, our project team leader, Ms. Renee McGinnis, is unable to be here. However, we will need a motion to approve these two schedules, the use value schedule and the county schedule. We do have our county tax assessor, Ms. Taylor Powell, here, so if she can come up for any questions that they may have. But we're going to need a motion to approve the two schedules, the use value schedule and the county schedule.
And then discuss after the motion?
Yes. So do we have?
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
And I second that motion.
All right, so now we can open for discussion. Did anyone have any questions?
I just wanted to confirm, no change from the document we got before. There's been no modifications to that schedule that we saw that was handed out in the booklet?
No, no, no changes have been made.
Okay, all right. It's on ahead.
Now, it's my understanding that through the state, we're required to do this every so often, correct?
Well, we have the revale, that is required every eight years, and the Schedule of Values follows the revaluation. I do have a copy of the ad that will go out for the approval that has some of the general statutes quoted and the appeal process, if you would all like a copy of that as well.
Yeah, actually, I would. I'd like that copy, yeah.
And it's my understanding as well is that we're, as county commissioners, we're pretty much required to approve it, correct?
Yes, it needs to be done, and it does have in the statutes the date that it does have to be done before January 1st, and that is why we...
Right. So the other thing too, for the public, folks listening in, approving the values doesn't mean we're approving the increase in taxes. This means we're approving the reevaluation of properties. I don't think it's a leap for anybody to realize how much stuff is going up, but that's a far cry from us approving the reassessment part that's done, in layman's terms. That us approving that doesn't mean we're approving an increase in taxes paid.
The Schedule of Values is pretty much the schedule of which the values will depreciate after the revaluation. We will still have property notices to go out with the revaluation. There will still be an appeal period for that, and this has, does not include anything with the tax rate tonight. This is just the schedule of value for depreciation.
Exactly, yeah, that's the point I was trying to make. Yep, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Well, thank you. We don't have any more discussion. We have it moved and seconded, so all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, so that carries through. Thank you. Let me move on here. We also will need Ms. Powell, number six, consider appeal of vehicle value requested by Ms. Katie Sanford. So the commissioners have received a detailed file for this appeal. We're just going to ask for the tax administrator, Ms. Taylor Powell, to introduce the information.
Yes, we did send the packets already out, and we have a short video that Ms. Sanford supplied that we are going to play shortly. And then if Ms. Sanford's in the audience tonight, I'll ask if she would like to make any notes before the board. And following that, I will have a short little PowerPoint. It does detail some of the valuation and definitions by DOR, which I think will be helpful not only in this appeal, but moving forward with the revale, it does have some of those same definitions.
Okay. Do you have the...
I'm not sick, I swallowed wrong. I don't want y'all thinking I'm another person contaminated.
If Ms. Sanford is here tonight, would you like to come up and speak to the board? All right. No? So this PowerPoint that I have made about the tax appeal for tonight, it is primarily slides from NCDOR's Fall Conference Meeting for the assessors. So I did add some slides that NCDOR did not have, simply because they kind of assumed that the assessors already had the general statutes that they were quoting. Any of the slides that are from the Department of Revenue do have their logo on them. This is their first slide, well, just the producers of it from Department of Revenue. Mostly Tina and Travis primarily deal with property valuation. Travis is the main lead with the vehicle valuation. Under General Statute 105-283, assessors must appraise and classify motor vehicles at its true money value. They do have a little breakdown of the retail property tax value, wholesale, dealer purchase. These are all factors that they use to make that value. Back again with the Schedule of Values, Department of Revenue has their own Schedule of Values and standards of which the valuation of classified motor vehicles statewide. The tax value is based off the purchase price of the vehicle when the vehicle is first registered. This does not include any of the dealer fees, so the DMV fees, service fees, any add-ons you get, that is not included. After the initial registration, the vehicle starts to reflect the tech value. Tech is the company that compiles the valuations based off of the reported sales in the state of North Carolina, and it uses the median value. This is also the program that can compute the high mileage for reductions based off age and the mileage of a vehicle. This is one of the general statutes that is going to define market value. It's General Statute 105-283. All property, real and personal, shall as far as practicable be appraised or valued at its true money value in money. When used in this subchapter, the words "true value" shall be interpreted as meaning market value. That is, the price estimated in terms of money at which the property will change hands between willing and financially able buyer and a willing seller, neither being under any compulsion to buy or sell, and both having reasonable knowledge of all usage to which the following property is adopted and for which it is capable of being used. That highlighted portion is the part that we are looking at tonight. The second statute is 105-330.2. This is based off of the value. An assessor must appraise a classified motor vehicle at its true value in money as prescribed by the previous statute we just saw, 105-283. The sales price of a classified motor vehicle purchased from a dealer, including all accessories attached to the vehicle, when it is delivered to the purchaser, is considered the true money value of the vehicle, and the assessor must praise at the vehicle at this price. This also has a note about the sales price excludes the tax of this chapter. The Property Tax Division of Department of Revenue must annually adopt the Schedule of Values, standards, and rules to be used in the valuation of all classified motor vehicles to ensure equitable statewide valuations, taking into account local market conditions allowing for adjustment miles and condition of the vehicles. NCDOR contracts with their vendor, tech. The vendor utilizes a combination of sources, but most of them are primarily what is reported from dealer sales of the vehicles. Poor sales or unusable sales are purged from the sales files, and they have two examples of such. The vehicle value valuation process determine the median adjusted sale price for each year by make and model. The median is used to reduce the impact of extremity between high and low records or the body type sent by DMV that could be incorrect. COD assists in determining eligibility and reliability of the data. Reconciliation. Review significant increases and decreases from previous years for accuracy and justification. Reconcile trim levels years across the same base model consistency. Values based on multiple sales to determine potential dealer selling price. This is the part where we have seen quite an impact since the COVID pandemic. It has increased higher demand of the new cars, some supply chain issues, elevated pricing, high interest, manufacturers focused moving on more expensive models over more exaggerated used car pricing. This is why DOR is seeing such an increase since the pandemic. This is also some statistics that NCDOR pulled from the COPOTS Car Price Index, where in July of '24, the average cost of a new car was $49,673, which remained relatively stable in the years, 30% higher in March of 2020 than the last data point from pre-COVID, so pretty much 30% higher on new cars since COVID. Data from the Bureau of Labor Statistics shows that the Consumer Price Index, which means measures of inflation, new vehicles in U.S. cities experienced 3% decrease from '23 to '24. While this is taking very slight decrease, it is the first indication of a price drop since they skyrocketed. Used car values as of July 2024, average used car prices remain 33% higher than the pandemic costs. Costs are likely to remain high for used cars because of the new car shortages that were over the past several years. The largest increase in price was from 2020 to '21. We saw a 27% increase in the CPI for used cars. New car prices are going up, and more people are more probably going to buy used cars, leading to an increased demand in this, thus higher prices for used cars as well. The last slide is just some more reasoning, the inventory shortage, the lack of incentives during sales, and the high interest rates on why these prices have continued to stay high on vehicles. Is there any questions?
Yeah, I got a couple. Sorry. So one, does the statute, the law, allow for the commissioners to override any of these requirements?
That's the law, but we have a right to appeal, and we are here tonight as a right for Ms. Sanford's appeal. But what I have given you, the general statutes, is the tax law.
Okay. The next thing is, is it talks in there, and I've read the package, I just want to make sure since your presentation, point out some points. It seemed like it was saying in there for a car purchased from a dealer, the first year, it's unequivocal, it's the sale price of the vehicle minus the fee.
Upon the day of delivery.
All those averages using the median or arithmetic mean, whatever you prefer, which I like the mean better than I like the median, but all that's for subsequent years.
They take the median price, not the median. They actually pick the middle number.
I got it, I got it. But I guess my point is, is that's all for the second year or third year after purchase, not that first tax year, correct?
For, no, for the first tax year, it is based off of the sales price strictly.
Right.
And that, that does not include, like I said, any of the fees or packages or add-ons that would be purchased.
It was my understanding too, that the sale price of the vehicle was this year, correct?
Yes.
Right.
A few months before the appeal.
Okay.
All right, so we have received that for consideration. Would you present what you're asking for us to motion tonight, to move?
We need to motion to either approve or deny Ms. Sanford's appeal based off of the information that was presented tonight.
Okay.
One more question, and so if we deny it tonight, do the person have a right to submit additional information and re-appeal?
After the board's appeal, she can approve, she can appeal to the Property Tax Commission.
Okay, but not to us again?
No, not to us again, because the county has made a decision. They can appeal upon the further of chain.
If there's no...
Yeah, just the only thing I'd say is, I've read the thing, and unfortunately, I don't think there's enough information from me to say, yeah, I'm going to go against the state guidelines or anything else. I'm thinking there might be more information there, but I'm not seeing it.
Well, the state guidelines is pretty clear. It's the purchase price of the year it was purchased, that is the value of the car.
Right.
And you know, next year, it should be devalued some, but that's next year, it's not this year.
Right. Well, when it goes to that median value, that does not necessarily mean it will automatically depreciate. It just depends on what that market is.
So it would depend on what that median value is for next year, depends on what she will pay in taxes.
And at that time, if she does have high mileage, which with the mileage she presented this year, it did not qualify for, but perhaps at that time next year, she can try again for high mileage, but it's still going to be an adjustment from market value.
Right. I'll be honest, I'm sympathetic after seeing the stuff and see the condition of the vehicle, but I mean, the rule's pretty straightforward, you bought it for that.
Right.
It's kind of a buyer beware thing in my mind, so.
I agree.
All right, so we're going to do...
I'll make a motion to deny.
I second that motion.
All right, so we have a motion to deny, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, so, thank you. Thank you, ma'am. Okay, so next on the agenda, we have the consideration of the renewal of lobbyist agreements for 2025 and 2026 biennial State of North Carolina operating budget. Our lobbyist and former North Carolina Senator Bob Steinberg is with us this evening to review the renewal process for these two companion agreements and to discuss the county's success in the latest legislative session and answer questions from the commissioners. So, Mr. Steinberg? I will say the commissioners have had the agreements before them to review prior to coming, so they should be familiar.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. And the commissioners, I'd like to say, it's an honor and privilege to be here with you all this evening, and we are discussing the renewal of the contract that we embarked upon with you a couple of years ago. And I think, I understand, probably we'll be getting a couple of questions as to what was accomplished, you know, on our side as it relates to what we did for Gates County, helped do. We didn't do it exclusively, but helped accomplish for Gates County. And I think that we'd have to be, we'd have to say in total, that it was a very good, productive two years for us, and most importantly, for Gates County. Some of the things that I want to share with you, a couple in particular, is when you're engaging with a lobbyist, you're not just, when you're evaluating the productivity of the lobbyist, you need to look beyond just what kind of appropriations you're getting. A lobbyist is also a consultant, he's here to help, he or she are here to help you with anything that might go on during the course of the year, and in the course of the year, there's a lot of things that do go on, and a lot of times you need a, you know, a very quick response. And so we're able to work, and I'm in a particularly good spot because having served in both the House and the Senate, I have access to all of the legislators and some of the folks in the executive branch, so it makes it easier for me. The other gentleman that works with me for Gates County is Jackson Stansel. Jackson's office is two blocks from the Legislative Building, which is Wells Fargo Building, so I don't know of anybody else that has this kind of arrangement in terms of lobbyists, where I'm basically here, except when I'm going to try and get things done as it relates to folks I know and so forth on your behalf, advocating for you. But let's just say, for example, I get a call from the Scott Sauer, and he says, we got a problem up here, and I need to see you as soon as possible, we can talk about it, you can come up. I'm in Edenton, I'm only just a hop, skip, and a jump away so I can, you know, I can come up and be here and hear him out, and then we can take the appropriate action to try and resolve the matter. If it's something that needs to be done with a great deal of urgency, then I can contact Mr. Stansel, and Mr. Stansel can walk over to the Legislative Building and see who it is that I'm suggesting that he needs to go and see. Mr. Stansel, we have 787 lobbyists in Raleigh that lobby our state government, and he has been consistently... government, and he has been consistently ranked in the top twenty lobbyists, so he's a, you know, he's been around for a while, his family's been around in the Legislative Building for a while, and so we have a unique, and I think, very effective partnership. Now, before the question comes up, I'm going to go ahead and address some of what we accomplished in this, in this last, this last couple of years during this last contract period. Ten million dollars for Gates County water sewer infrastructure projects, three hundred thousand dollars for the Sheriff's Office to purchase vehicles and equipment, four hundred thousand dollars for Gates County schools, two hundred thousand dollars for the ROTC Cadet Program, and two hundred thousand dollars for science equipment and supplies. The cost of, to the county to accomplish that, have us representing you, was thirty-six thousand dollars a year, so it's seventy-two thousand dollars for the two-year contract period. There are no increases in this request for next year, we haven't raised the fees that we're asking for, and I would say it's a pretty good return on your investment. When you think about that cost, there is not, I doubt, I could be wrong, but I doubt very much there's any full-time employee working for Gates County that is working for less than thirty-six thousand dollars a year. So, basically, for the price of a entry-level employee with no benefits, you have the services of not just one lobbyist, but two lobbyists, so it's, it's an effective arrangement, I think. You will be the ultimate determiner of that, but I think you'd find it to be very effective, and we're looking forward to working with you and appreciate your confidence in us over the last couple of years, and certainly look forward to continuing that arrangement as we work into the next biennium.
All right, thank you, sir.
Yeah, so I got a couple of questions. So, for one is, an issue that I feel like is just hammering Gates County on the head is our fluoride level in our drinking water, and, I mean, granted, a lot of grants have come through here, but, I mean, a lot of those state revolving fund grants and CDVG grants are being handed out like candy right now, so, I mean, all due respect, a lot of that money's coming to counties regardless of whether lobbying for system are applying for the grants or not.
That's not necessarily true.
Well, I disagree with you, but.
There's, you have to keep your pedal to the metal. You've got to be, someone, you don't want to be running to Raleigh every day or every week to run and advocate, and that's, that's the job that we take on some of that money. A grant you is federal money that came through, but the way that money is designated is through the efforts of those folks who are doing the advocating. They've got to tell the narrative. Not everybody is getting it, I can assure you. And while there has been a lot of money that has been spent in the first year of the last biennium, and there's still water and sewer money left that has not been spent yet, but we're hoping to be able to tap into, no pun intended, tap into some of that and help those folks who are still in the fluoride issue. I am familiar with the issue that you're referring to, and that is an issue that is not exclusive to this county, to Gates County, but it is certainly a very serious situation at Gates County, and there are people addressing it. You've got your two legislators as well, your House member and your Senate member. It's, you know, we work as a team. We work with the commissioners, we work with you all, and to try and get it done. I've been on both sides of the aisle, so I know what lobbyists do and don't do, and I would say to you this, that the smallest counties with the smallest budgets, who on paper appear to really not be able to afford a lobbyist, are the ones that need it the most.
Right. So, yeah, and I'll go forward and say, two years ago, when it came up, and I shared this, it was a four-one vote, I was the no. After the past two years, going to Raleigh, having different conversations with our Senator or representative and others in Raleigh, asking how things are going forward, who's speaking for us, who's been representing us, your names come up. To me, you know, I look back and I am willing to say I have flipped on that, because I was very hesitant and very apprehensive before, but after conversations that I've personally had in Raleigh, and again, with our Senator and our representative, they have spoken very highly of the lobbyists, saying very much in Raleigh what you're saying here, that the smaller counties that you think couldn't are the ones that need more voices.
Exactly.
At the table. So, I do appreciate. Are there any other questions?
Well, I was the one that was asking the question as far as the return on the investment that we have, and I appreciate your answer back to that.
Thank you.
To me, I appreciate everything that you have done for the county and with your lobbyist firm, as far as that goes. It's going to be, for me, about more about the future and where are we going to go from here. There's, there's some good opportunities for Gates County. We got a plot of land that's sitting there that is pretty vacant, so we would like to see something there, that, more to come on that in the future as we kind of get our thoughts and the county commissioners get more on the same page when it comes to that. So, we are definitely going to need your help in the future to be able to get some of that. We see that other counties in the surrounding area are building new schools and those type of things like that, and they're getting a lot of grant money from the state to do that, that's not coming from, directly from the tax base. This is money that's coming from the tax base of North Carolina in whole, and with all the damage that's happened in Western Carolina, there's a lot of sympathy for those poor people that's having to deal with that right now, and it's going to be a lot of state money that's going to be flowing there. So, the freedom of money coming from the state is not going to be as easy as it was before, and somebody like yourself to be able to help us do that with a poor county like Gates County is, it would, it would help us in the long run.
Well, thank you for those comments, and, you know, Gates County, whether they like it or not, I was talking with your chairperson earlier today, Gates County is, some people don't, maybe don't want to see Gates County grow, Gates County's going to be growing. You're hugging the, you're hugging the border of Virginia. A lot of folks who are living in Virginia are contemplating moving to these northeastern counties because the taxes are lower and so on and so forth, and these aren't necessarily folks that have schoolchildren. I mean, these are just folks, military retirees and so forth. There are a couple of projects that are on the map right now. You know, any, any economic project in northeastern North Carolina benefits everybody. This is one of the unusual regions where any county that comes up and has a new plant, for example, open, everybody benefits, because it's not that difficult to go drive, you know, forty miles, fifty miles up here in the northeast to get to work. But having access to the people who are writing the checks, having access to the people who are, and I, you know, as I'm going in as a former legislator, I'm not, I don't have to be concerned about competing with other constituencies and so on and so forth. I am going in to advocate for you and for your particular needs. I think this is another example of all of my clients, all of the clients that we have together, and the clients that I have on my own, have all renewed their contracts, so I think that's a pretty good statement that we're doing our job.
Have any other comments or concerns, questions? Okay.
All right, well, I think we're pretty much to the point now where we're.
Yeah, we're going to have to move forward with a motion to.
I motion that we move forward with the contract.
Okay. All right, I'm going to second that motion.
So, some discussion. Again, I can, I hear what you're saying, Mr. Steinberg, having worked in neighboring town where two-thousand population got more money than Gates County did, or whole county in the same timeframe, and great job that Bill Ward, our representative, is doing, a lot of the money flowing to us. I want to see something more, and especially when the, to me, the hottest button issue is drinking water, and our fluoride level's been for twelve years, and we're spending money on a sewer plant, a secondary sewer plant, and we haven't gotten anything for fluoride to deal with that, and that's been brought up several months ago, and so I just don't support us spending money on lobbyists, I like spending seventy-two thousand dollars on bottled water if necessary for school kids or school lunches, so.
You need to be careful not to be penny wise and pound foolish with all due respect.
Yeah, I've heard that before. I've heard that, yeah.
I'm sure you have. But I think it's, you know, I think all of the money that you receive, no, I'm just, I'm just making a comment, if I may, all of the money that Gates County has received, the money that you've spent for a lobbyist, may not all have come here without the efforts of the lobbyists, number one, and I can assure you that is probably true. And secondly, I'd say the return certainly is well worth it, and we work together as a team. I look forward to working with you and the rest of the commissioners, and what we do is, at the first part of the year, we all get together, and you come up with a wish list, the things that you'd like to see accomplished in this next session, and then we, you know, and then we will work together to try and accomplish that.
Well, the grant algorithms, I'll say this, though, just so you've, I've heard you out, when you apply for most of these grants, the grant algorithms have nothing in there where you get additional scores or additional points and money based upon lobbyist intervention. The algorithms are straightforward, none of them have anything to do with lobbying efforts. So, if it's a secondary appropriation that's done, which I'm not aware of any of those that have really happened, then the lobbyist's value is absolutely important. But when the Division of Water Infrastructure is scoring a grant application, they don't put down points, hey, you get the extra ten points because you had a lobbyist involved. So, while I hear what you're saying about being, you know, penny foolish, so to speak, at the same time, for me, a lot of the grant money flows based upon the grant applications and the validity of those versus having somebody ask the Division of Water to intervene, so.
It's still advocacy, and I would, again, echo the comments of your chairperson a few minutes ago, as she was referring to both of your legislators, your Senator and your House member, who have both very strongly stated that the arrangement that we have with a lobbyist, working with them, has been very beneficial in helping them to help you all, and it will continue to be that way.
All right. We appreciate that we have a motion on the floor, so we're going to have a call to vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And any opposed?
Nay.
All right. Majority is for approval. Yes, sir. Thank you.
I appreciate it. Thank you very much, and look forward to working with you for the next couple of years. Thanks a lot.
Yes, sir. Thank you. All right.
Now, is there anything that you need me here for, for the, are there any specific issues that are being discussed?
We will look forward to, I think I mentioned, we might have a work session coming up sometime in January, and I will definitely be in contact with you.
Yes, I think that's a great idea. Okay. All right, thank you all. Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so we are moving along to the review of Commissioner Committee assignments. There was some discussion on this the last time that we met, and we have pushed it here, so we have the review draft for discussion. We did have a couple of things that we had moved around with the Albemarle Commission and the Albemarle Regional Health Services and things. So, as it stands, as presented, Commissioner Brian Roundtree, Albemarle Regional Health Services, Gates Aging and Adult Services, Gates County Board of Social Services, Trillium Health Resources, Northern Regional Board, and Juvenile Crime Prevention Council. We have Commissioner Nathan Berryman, which we have in addition to this, as had discussed, the three, as presented at the last meeting, were Albemarle Rural Planning Transportation Advisory Committee, Broadband Action Task Force, Gates Interregional Transportation System Board, and we have also thought it might be fruitful to have a Merchants Commerce Park Review Board. As we have mentioned, we have a big piece of land out there, so we are forming a committee that will be a review board of sorts before things come to the commissioners, and Commissioner Berryman took you to consider that. Commissioner Forsyth, we have Albemarle Commission, Proquemis Chawan and Gates Landfill Commission, Albemarle Regional Solid Waste Management Authority, Gates County Partners for Health, and the Tri-County Animal Shelter, for Vice Chair Craddock, Broadband Action Force, Proquemis Chawan and Gates Landfill Commission, the WIOA Consortium and Northeast Workforce Development Board, and the Public Health and Safety Committee, and then for myself, Gates County Opioid Prevention and Intervention Advisory Committee, Gates County Medical Transportation Board, Northeast Workforce Development Board, Tourism Advisory Committee, and Reentry Committee for Gates, Chawan, Hurtford, and Berti, which is also a newly formed committee. There are two boards, and I just mentioned, in case anyone else notices the repetition, there are two boards, the Broadband Action Task Force and the Proquemis Chawan Gates Landfill Commission, that have two commissioner seats on those boards, so that is why that was duplicated within this. And beneath that, we have the Gates County Personnel Board, and per our ordinance, the Gates County Board of Commissioners Personnel Board shall be composed of two commissioners and the county manager. The two commissioners shall be the acting chairman, and one commissioner designated by the majority members of the board by a vote. So, in addition to approving the committee assignments, we will need to choose the second commissioner to be on the Gates County Personnel Board. So, first, we'll go with the committee assignments, and then we'll take nominations for the Personnel Board. All right, so if we can have a motion to approve committee assignments or to.
So, yes.
Okay.
So, secretary.
All right. Any discussion on those? No? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and that has passed. All right, and then, so next, we'll move on to the Gates County Personnel Board, we'll open it up for nominations.
I'd like to nominate Nathan Berryman.
Nathan Berryman? All right, if we have any other nominations? No? All right, we will close it for nominations. All those in favor of Nathan Berryman for the Personnel Board?
Aye.
Aye? All right. So, the ayes have it. That board will be composed of myself, Commissioner Berryman, and the county manager, Mr. Sauer.
I have one question concerning assignments. The Albemarle Commission, there's ten counties represented, but they have fourteen seats, right? And they rotate the four seats amongst the other ten counties, they, every time they change?
Mm-hmm.
And so, we had one seat, and I guess Ms. Hoffler sat on it the last couple of years, and if I go on there, do you know if the second seat happens to be rotating those, because it might be, they come back and tell us first of the year, we need to have a second person on that, so just maybe be aware.
I don't know offhand, but if we could have the clerk make a note to look into that, and if so, we'll address it at the next meeting. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Yep.
All right. So, we have reached the end of the agenda, and we'll be opening up for the next public comment period. So, if there's anyone who would like to address the board, this is your opportunity to speak. As a reminder, the public comment period is to listen to citizen concerns or take note of subject matter for consideration at a later date. The way this will work is if you are interested in speaking, you'll come up to the clerk so she can take down your name and voting district, and then you can come to the podium. So, we'll give just a moment in case anyone wants to rise to speak.
Be brave.
Yeah. I'll vote for that.
Okay. All right, I see none, so we will move on to Commissioner comments. We'll start with Mr. Forsyth.
Yeah, I, actually, I'm not sure this is a good one. I'm going to read it. I had a request that was sent to me, and I'm not so sure that it's, was the appropriate means, but the person reached out to me concerning a Freedom of Information Act request, and I'm very sensitive to those. So, I'm going to read what they sent me, because they worded as if they consider this an official public records request, and I'll read their request, and then I'll also read, it's a little long, but then I'll read my response. So, this is, "Personal records of all employees involved in decisions and actions on June thirteenth and June twenty-eighth, particularly any documents that pertain to their interactions with my account or property. Maintenance and service records documentation, all maintenance of or inspection activities conducted on my property, particularly any work involving the meter, water line, or other equipment from August twenty-second, October twenty twenty-four. Documentation related to meter removal, towing, and pipe removal procedures. Policy and procedure documents, the water department's customer service policy, and any amendments relevant to billing, disconnection unauthorized fees, particularly those related to disconnection notices and procedures. Authorization for property entry, towing, and storage of vehicles, unauthorized fees and charges. Evidence of tampering, any evidence used to pursue charges of tampering, including field reports, logs, document inspections, photographs, or videos of the meter and pipe conditions. Utility easements and property access records of any utility easements or documentation justifying the department's entry onto my property. Documentation showing any compliance with local ordinances regarding easement specifications, utility meter placement. Communication records, all correspondence between myself and water department, including emails, letters, phone calls, all internal communications, memos, and notes discussing actions taken on my account, such as disconnection, reconnection, inspections, or investigations, all communication with respect to third parties, including William Roundtree, Sheriff Campbell, and any individuals not authorized on my account, as well as any other. as well as any other external parties involved in decisions or actions related to my property." Now, it says, "Please provide these documents in electronic format if possible. If there are any fees associated with fulfilling this request, please inform me in advance. Additionally, I have verified my identity in person with your department." I guess they mean Water Department. That's a Dave Forsyth comment. "On two separate occasions to request this information, no policy provided to me specifies that I must be physically present to obtain these records. Thank you for your attention to this request. I look forward to full and prompt response within 10 business days. If you cannot fulfill this request in full, please provide a written explanation, including any applicable policy or legal basis for refusal. You may reach me. They gave their personal phone number, their personal email. For scheduling purposes, you may also contact my spouse, and gives that person's cellphone, and as she is often available to discuss the account matters while I'm at work. Thank you for your attention." And then they give their name. I'm gonna withhold that, because I'm not sure about whether it should be shared. My response was, is my intention to read this at the next opportune time at a commissioner's meeting. I gave this to him before the last meeting was canceled. I will note there's a significant lack of details in your request, including previous requests you alluded to, the mixing of requests for the Sheriff's Department office and Water Department requesting what may be construed as nondisclosable personnel information. Regardless, I believe there should be some sunlight shown on your request. I will turn this over to the full board for whatever action is deemed appropriate." So I'm reading this. I think this clearly is not something we should take action on. I think we should turn it over to Mr. Godwin, the attorney, when he gets here. But I wanted, in good faith, point out to people that you contact me. I'll try and share it. I will say, when I said last meeting, that I'd be willing to read this. This is what I would define as an excessively long one. I won't be reading long ones like this again. I will share it. I'll print out a copy and provide it to commissioners if you send it to me, if I can print it out. But I won't read out this long one again. This was excessive, a lot of details. I think it's a mixed bag of stuff, and I'm not reading the person's name, but I think this is too much for a public forum to, for me to address. So this is my one time reading it as an example of what I won't do again. That's all I got.
All right, thank you, sir. Commissioner Berryman?
No, I do not have any comments at this point in time.
All right, thank you, sir.
No, I'm telling you, it must not go on before Dave.
Yep, okay. I just want to thank you both for representing us in the Christmas parade this past Saturday that I was so very sad to miss, but family came first, so we had that. Really excited to look into January. We will be sharing information about a work session as soon as things come together for that. So that is in the works for some time in January. Our January meeting is going to be on the fourth Wednesday of January, due to the first being a holiday. So we will be meeting on January 22nd. And I'm gonna double check just one second. I checked it earlier, but I'm always afraid I'm gonna misspeak. Yes, January 22nd at 6:00 PM here. Again, we will try and hold to that public comment section at the beginning and at the end of the meeting to allow those with concerns to speak both before and after. And that is all I have for this time. I hope that you all have a good holiday and that we can.
Thank the sheriff for his help with the parade and his staff. They did a great job.
Yes, I was gonna add that, after you finish, was, thank you Sheriff Campbell for all your help and letting us ride along with you and your team.
Yes.
Awesome job.
All right, so if we could get a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Same, second.
All right, all in favor? And we are adjourned.